Greetings to all of you and welcome to this, the third session on the Gospel of Mark. I'm Pastor Timothy Muse, lead pastor here at St. Paul's Lutheran Church in Alliance, Ohio. It's a joy to be with you today as we spend this time together. I want to thank you for your investment. I want to thank you for your willingness to journey with me through this time and through the work that we're doing together. Pleasure to be part of the time that you invest in this. It's a pleasure to be part of your journey, not only through your life of faith, but also through your understanding of the Bible and your work of the Bible. It's a joy to journey and explore, to dwell in God's Word and allow God's Word to dwell in us. So, thank you for this. Thank you for your willingness to be part of this and thank you for willingness to invest. If you're finding benefit from this, I would ask that you would share it out there. I would ask that you would share it on your social media platforms, Instagram, Facebook, or Twitter, depending on how you hear it and what you're connecting in. Obviously, this connects to my YouTube channel, so I would certainly encourage you to, to subscribe to my YouTube channel. That way then, you won't miss any episodes of anything that are brought forward. Really, right now, on my YouTube channel, I'm working mostly the Bible study and then whatever live stream services that we do, either Sunday morning or Wednesday or our meditation sessions. So, subscribe to my YouTube channel. That way you can, you connect everything, you get everything going on and everything is taking place. And if you have any questions or comments, my contact information will come up at the end of the session, as it always does. You can go ahead and reach out to me. I'm happy to have a dialogue. I'm happy to talk about whatever, you know, whatever it is that you'd like to talk about, whatever it is that you'd like to experience or express. So, definitely. Reach out to me. I'd love to hear from you. And look, if you share it out there on your social media platforms, which I really encourage you to do. I've said this before, you know, we're really blessed of all of the generations and all of existence to have the benefit of being able to share the Word without really having to open up ourselves or express ourselves. We have it even better than the Reformation when they invented the printing press. We have this incredible thing we call the Internet. And you just, you dial in and, you know, and you can, you can share it, you can get it out there. You don't even need to look at anybody. So, use it. Use the power that you have in order to work for God's good and for the kingdom. Definitely. All things for, for the good of the kingdom, all things for the good of God. So, and tag me in it, tag the church in it. Love to know where you're at. Love to know where you're listening from. Love to know where you're experiencing from. That'd be awesome. So, we are in the Gospel of Mark. Today, I want to talk about this kind of a special edition, if you will. I'm not going to dwell into the text today. I want to talk about two things today as related to the Bible and, and part of the Bible, but not necessarily in not, not Mark. And that is, first, I want to talk about biblical translation. And then I also want to talk about the canon or the, the, the church canon and what that looks like and, and how it came to be and what it means and how it affects us. So, so this is, this is kind of a special episode that I want to work with here today, to really kind of help you get a better grasp on, on what is being offered and, and why it's important and how it works in your understanding of reading the Bible. So, the first thing I want to talk about is translation. And we've talked about this in a number of ways. So, I say in just about every episode that I, I say to have a Bible open, whether it's a translation or a paraphrase. So, there's two types of things. There's a translation and a paraphrase. And that's what I want to talk about first. I want to talk about the difference between the two. So, a translation is taking word for word from the original language and translating it to whatever language it's going into. So, English, let's say. So, the original language of the Bible is Hebrew. The Old Testament is written in Hebrew. The Jews were Hebrews and they had their own language called Hebrew. So, everything in the Old Testament is in Hebrew. Okay? And so, the Hebraic language is a beautiful language. It's a Semitic language. So, it reads right to left, unlike the Romance languages or English that leads, reads left to right. And so, that's one of the main differences. Another one of the differences is that the, the language of, the Hebrew language is written in characters like English, but the characters are only consonants. So, the consonants are characters and vowels are dots or lines or other kind of apostrophe marks above or below, before or after the character. So, depending on how the letter is used, it has different marks over it to indicate, you know, what, what vowel sounds should be put where. Which, you know, again, if it's written clearly, it's pretty easy to read and it's pretty easy to understand. The first Hebrew text called the Masoretic text, which was, is believed to be the oldest written Hebrew text, had no spacing and no, no vowel dots, no vowel markers. So, it was just a series of consonants. And so, it took someone who had been able to read Hebrew to break up the language and be able to translate it into Greek. Actually, was one of the first things that Hebrew was translated into. So, the Old Testament is written in Hebrew. And so, the Old Testament that we have, like in the New Revised Standard Version of the Bible, which is what I use, that trans, that's a translation. So, to the best of the capability, the original language is used, is translated into the English. Now, how that happens is, you know, you have the original language and you look at characters and how it's used. And then you look at how many times it's used in other texts or other ways to figure out how often it is. You know, if you look in the dictionary, you will see the definition of a word and you'll see like definition one, definition two, definition three. Definition one is often, if not always, the most common use of the word. Definition two is the second most common, three is the third most common, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So, as we learn more about the language, as translations continue to blossom and grow, that comes from learning more about the language, how the words were used. And sometimes, sometimes things change from one to the other. So, a good example of that, the Revised Standard Version, when the three wise men in the Gospel of Matthew show up, they worship Jesus. They get on their knees and worship Jesus because the word in Greek for worship and the word in Greek for paying homage are the same, but it depends on the usage. So, later on, as the New Revised Standard Version comes forward, the word actually is retranslated as paying homage because you pay homage to a king and you worship a god. So, so that's just kind of a little piece of the translation. So, Hebrew is the original language of the Old Testament and Hebrew then is, it's translated into what we know as English. Word for word to the best of capability. Now, there are some places where we don't have an English word for the Hebrew text. And so, we just have to fill in the blanks, if you will. But for the most part, we're able to go word for word. That's a translation. And translations are great because they're very true to the original text. The hard part with a translation can be that the words are cumbersome and the language is, it can be difficult. It can be hard to enter into because it's not usually how we speak in regular terms or regular forms. The, the sentence structure is different and a translation is going to hold on to that sentence structure to the best of its capability without manipulating it too much or without changing words to make it more palatable or easier to enter into. That's what a translation does. Better for biblical scholarship, better for staying truer to the text. Not necessarily better, just better for that purpose. That's why I use a translation because there's not a whole lot of, of liberty that is used within the language. The translators work really hard to go from one language to the other. The challenge with that though, is it can be hard to enter into and it can be hard to understand sometimes. It can be hard. It can be cumbersome to really grasp. So, that's a translation. A paraphrase. So, so, so the Old Testament was in Hebrew. Sorry, I'm kind of jumping out of myself. So, the Old Testament was in Hebrew. Jesus spoke Aramaic. Aramaic was a kind of a local dialogue within the Jewish. It was more, more for the peasants. It was a more peasant dialogue. Remember, Jesus grows up as a carpenter. He's very intelligent in Hebrew, but Aramaic is more of a working dialogue, a working text. So, some of the New Testament, early New Testament books are written in, in Aramaic. Which then, you know, we get some, we get some of that in the, in the Gospels when, when there's some translations, especially in the Gospel of John. We hear Aramaic used. Aramaic is a, is a pretty localized language. Not a whole lot known about it, but it's, it's there. It's Jesus' language. Again, and so, translating that into English. Now, we don't, now we would, but, but it was a series of translations from Aramaic to Greek, Greek to German, German to English. Okay? So, so the English translation that we worked with for a long time was actually a translation of a translation. It's only been recently that we've actually started seeing, oh, recently, I say within the past hundred years, 80 years, that we've seen translation directly from the original language directly to English. There was always a step in between. English is a rather late language on the scene, if you will. So, so that's where it's at. Other than the King James Version, you know, you have the King James Version, which is a whole different. I really won't even talk about the King James Version because that's a whole different reality that was brought into. So, so Jesus spoke in Aramaic. The New Testament is mostly written in Greek. This would have been the time when the Greeks occupied Rome or when the Greeks had a lot of influence in Rome, I guess you could say. Rome was growing. Rome was powerful. But, but Greek was the language that most of the New Testament was written in. Paul wrote in Greek. That was, that was just part of the language, especially when he's writing to the Gentiles. So, so you have those three languages. Those three languages are what we use to translate the Bible into what we have today. So, now a paraphrase. A paraphrase really tries to stay true to the text, but takes a whole lot more liberty to make the language more, more accessible, more palatable, to make the stories and the ideas more enlightened to where the society is at the time, which is great because it makes it easier to enter into. But it's a bit more of a challenge because it also kind of takes away from some of the language that is supposed to be there. So, a paraphrase, and we have paraphrases like the Good News Bible or the Living Bible. You may be familiar with both of those. Or the Message. The Message is a pretty, a pretty common new paraphrase. And reading the Bible and, and reading the Bible from the Message, it really is a powerful thing. It's really a cool thing to listen to and hear. However, however, it's a paraphrase. So, there are places where the author or authors have taken liberties to fill in gaps that make it a little bit more difficult to understand. A paraphrase is also helps to bring it into contemporary language. So, the language of the people, which is important. Again, most people aren't biblical scholars and, and most people aren't expected to be biblical scholars. So, I would, I would prefer someone have a paraphrase Bible and they're willing to read it than having a translation and they don't find any joy or enlightenment out of it. However, a paraphrase does take some liberties and some of those liberties may have theological impacts. And so, when I'm doing a Bible study or my preaching Bible, I work with a translation. Now, I will use my own liberties within that, but overall, I'm going to use a translation because it's closer to the original text. And why do we want to do that? What's the point of being closer to the original text? The point of being closer to the original text is belief that we're closer to the original words. So, if we're working with a translation that is different than, so if we're working with a translation, then those words are closer to the original. There's a higher ratio of likelihood that the words on the page are actually what came out of Paul or what came out of Peter or maybe even came out of Jesus. When we work with a paraphrase, we're nuancing the language. And, and again, and, and to make it easier to access and understand, and that's great. And I'm not, I'm not dissing that or, or diminishing that in any way. Just because it's easier to enter into, and if it's easier to enter into, then I certainly would encourage you to do it, would encourage anybody to do it. Just understand that, that there might be some separation one to the other between the original language. For those of you who might be familiar with Mary Poppins and the song, you know, "A spoonful of sugar makes the medicine go down" or "Helps the medicine go down", that's a paraphrase. A paraphrase is kind of the spoonful of sugar. It doesn't take away, but it helps make it a little bit more palatable. And sometimes a paraphrase does, it might miss the mark a little bit. But it can fill in gaps that actually a translation can miss the mark because we don't have words for it. So, so, you know, there's, there's pros and cons to both. There's pros and cons to both. And, and it's not necessarily important to say one is better than the other. I have my choice and I would encourage everybody else to have their choice. One of the challenges about language is that structure is, is different all throughout the world. You know, we structure our language differently than a lot of the Romance languages and definitely a lot of the Semitic languages in how we sentence structure, where we put words in, in order. You know, we start with the subject. We start with the noun and then the subject and then the verb and, you know, all that kind of stuff. But in, in a lot of Semitic languages, it's actually reversed. So, and, and really, one of the first places that the Western world got a chance to kind of dwell in this is when they heard Yoda speak. Yoda speaks more of a very direct translation of a Semitic language. And, and I think that was part of the point that, that Lucas did with the character. But, so, so the, the classic greeting in Islam, Shalom Allah Aleikum. The peace of God be with you. Okay? We wouldn't speak that way. We would say God's peace be with you, right? You know? But the peace of God be with you. And then the response, Aleikum Allah. Shalom Allah Aleikum, Allah Aleikum Allah Shalom. Aleikum Allah Shalom. Which is, and upon you the peace of God. Again, that's not how we structure sentences. Aleikum Allah Shalom. That's it. So, I'm sorry, I'm caught on that now. But that's not how we structure sentences. That's the best, that's the best one that I can think of. To kind of give an example of the Semitic language that I know. We don't structure sentences that way. We structure sentences differently. And because we structure sentences differently, that creates a, a different understanding of how we use the language. So, so you see, the, the translation and the paraphrase, not only do they have to do with words, but also sentence structure. Because if you're writing a text that is, that isn't going to be accessible, then no one's going to access it. And language, though you, you, you try to stay true to, to the current language, you also have to speak to the vernacular. You have to speak to the moment. That's one of the reasons why we as a church don't use the King James Version publicly because we don't speak the Queen's proper English. We don't speak the King's English. That's not how we speak as, as humans. And so, when you're addressing the Bible, you want to make sure that you're using language that people can address and that people can, can deal with and get into and enter into. Because you don't ever want to make the language so out there that people won't engage it. Because then it's just an archaic book and we don't want to do that. So, translation paraphrase. When I, when, when you engage the scriptures, when you engage the Bible studies, you can use either. I use a translation, but you can use either and either one will suffice for what we are trying to do. Because we're not writing theology. We're not, you know, we're not trying to decipher ancient text. So, use whatever. Whatever you have going on, that's perfectly acceptable for, for biblical study and as you're going through this, as you're going through this course or just about any other course that you might be studying or, or following along with in the Bible. Okay, so another thing that I've talked about quite often is the canon. So, let's talk about the canon. And what exactly is the canon or the biblical canon? This is really important for us to understand how everything is laid out and what the point of all of this is. So, so let's go first with the actual word canon. What does the word canon actually mean? So, the word canon is, means rule or measuring stick. Okay? And, and really, it was, it was around the 18th century that the word canon was used to, you know, really talk about the Bible. But it's a rule or a measuring stick. Okay? The biblical canon. So, so the Bible, the books of the Bible are what we use to measure everything against. Okay? So, our ethics, our morals, our understanding of society, our understanding of our relationship with God, with each other, marriage, family, all that. Everything stems from where everything is measured against the Bible. So, so it's a biblical measuring sticker. It's a book of measuring sticks. So, that's what it means to, that's what the biblical canon means. I know a lot of people want to think like boom, you know? That's not, that's not what it is. Like, not like a gun or a cannon. But the biblical canon is a, a book of rules or measuring sticks. As we understand it to, you know, to, to gauge our life or to guide our life. And, and, you know, and there's a lot of debate. There's a lot of debate about the canon, about what's in the canon, about what should stay, maybe what should go. And there's been talk for the past, I don't know, 100 years about reopening the canon. I don't ever think it's going to happen because it was hard enough to get the, the canon taken care of back the first time. I don't think we'll ever agree on it the second time. But it is, it is the combined book of the Bible that we then look at as the measuring stick for, for the faith. So, so that's the canon. That's what that word means. It means measuring stick or rule. So, let's talk about. So, when did the canon come into existence? And here's the thing. The canon really was formalized, what would, what would be called the Catholic Canon. Okay? And, and really, it, for some of you, you may know that there's the, there's the Septuagint Bible. And then there's the Catholic Bible, as it's called. And the Catholic Bible has a few more books in it than the, what we would call the, the, the Greek Bible or the, the Bible that we are used to, the Septuagint, which is the Greek Bible, the Bible for Greek-speaking people, which, which, again, this is all very old stuff. But, but the Catholic Canon, the Catholic Church, you know, it affirmed at the Council of Rome, the Synod of, which was in 382, the Synod of Hippo, which was in 393, the Council of Carthage in 397. Again, the Council of Carthage in 419, the Council of Florence from 1431 to 1449, and the Council of Trent from 1545 to 1563. Those, those councils really established and continue to evolve the canon as we know it or the books of the Bible. So, this has been a work in progress over a, a long period of time. However, there was no real, there was no real singular list that was just brought forward. We need to remember that the Bible didn't just like drop down from heaven. All right? God just didn't like open up and, and drop the 66 books of the Bible and say, hey, here you go. Or the 73 books of the Bible, depending on which one you have. God didn't just do that. God is like, hey, here is the Bible. No, these are books, letters, stories that are written to particular people over a long period of time. The, the actual timeframe of the penning of the Bible probably goes about 17 or 1800 years from, from when the first book is written, all the way up until the last book is written. So, it's, it's, it's a looking at these books, taking these stories, reading these scrolls, bringing them together, and then establishing which books we want to have in the canon. How does it represent? Who does it represent? Does it really represent God or not? And then the scripture fathers or the canon fathers decided that these books that we now know as the canon did represent, the Bible represented the Word of God in an appropriate way. So, that's why the canon is the way it is. That's how it came into be over a long period of time. Now, the early church had what was called the Septuagint, which is the, you know, which is the Bible for the Greek speak, Greeks, Greek-speaking people. And, and there was a, you know, and it was a little bit smaller. There were some things that weren't in the Bible or some things that were wrapped around or maybe included and combined to create a smaller text. And it really wasn't, look, it really wasn't about the number of books in the Bible. There wasn't like a magic number that they were trying to get down to or get up to. But it was about the faithfulness of the content that was in each one of the books or each one of the writings. And the early church fathers wanted to make sure that they were, and they were fathers. They wanted to make sure that they were true to the faith in what they incorporated into the book. Now, we as modern day believers, we as modern day believers have so much more information than our canon fathers did. You know, there's so much more that we know about history, about language. The Dead Sea Scrolls revealed to us a massive amount of information. So, so we have these books of the Bible, which is the canon. And for the, for the Septuagint, now, some of you may have seen a Bible that has an Apocrypha. The Apocrypha is what would be known as the books of the Catholic Bible. I don't like to say that because that's really not accurate. And, and, and we don't need to be, we don't need to be identifying that way. But the Apocrypha are the books that, that are included in the canon from the Roman church that, that the Protestant church doesn't include in the canon, but recognizes them as, as important to scripture, as important to the faith history. And that's what, and, and so, you know, the, the books of the canon are scriptural. They are the guides. They are the rulers, the rule, the measuring stick that we use. And then the, the Apocrypha or the Deuteronomical books, or the lost books of the New Testament, they're all out there. They're, they're a little bit different. They are seen more as guides than, and, and they have good things to say, but they're not, they're, they're not, either not included in the canon or don't, don't have enough to be included in the canon. Okay, so the Protestant Canon, we'll just, we'll just dwell there, has 66 books. There's 39 books in the Old Testament and 27 books in the New Testament. That is how the Bible is divided. The Old Testament is the story of God's creation all the way up to what would effectively be the beginning of the work of Jesus Christ. And that's the New Testament. The New Testament starts with the birth of Christ and goes through the recreation of the new heaven and new earth in the Book of Revelation. So, so we have two chunks, two distinct pieces of information. The Old Testament, which would have been written in Hebrew and would become from the Hebrew text. And then the New Testament, which would have been Greek and Aramaic. And the order for the books, so the, the books are in a particular order, an important order for the books. In the Old Testament, you have what would be the, the first five books of the Bible, Genesis, Exodus, Leviticus and Deuteronomy. These would be the, the, oh boy, and the word just went right out of my head. It'll come back to me later. But these would be the first five books of the Bible, the most important. They really kind of run everything up to the, the death of Moses. Okay? So, up to the death of Moses. And then what you have after that is you have what would be the historical books from Joshua all the way up through Chronicles and, and, and then, and then you get into what would be wisdom literature. Wisdom literature is, is really, you know, Job, Esther, Psalms, Proverbs, Ecclesiastes, Song of Solomon. Then you get in the prophets, the major prophets and the minor prophets. And so, so that's, that's the Old Testament. It's kind of divided up into multiple sections. You know, you have your judges and your prophets and all that kind of stuff. So, so the books are put together. They're not necessarily in historical chronological order, but they're, they're in chunks. They're in important chunks of the Bible themselves. So, so that's, that's what you have with the Old Testament. And then the New Testament, which is, so it's divided up into, you have your, the Gospels, Matthew, Mark, Luke and John, the four Gospels. Then you have the Book of Acts, which is the early church. Then you have the writings of Paul, which run from Romans and goes all the way through Hebrews. You know, there's a lot of debate about whether Paul wrote Hebrews or not. Some people throw it in there. Some people don't. And then you have James, who's the half-brother of Jesus. You have the three letters of, you have two letters of Peter, the three letters of John, which are, these are the, what we call the epistles. Then you have Jude, also the half-brother of Jesus, and Revelation. Or the brother of Jesus, James and Jude, brother of Jesus, half-brother of Jesus. Depends on, depends on which tradition you're coming from. So, that's the New Testament. So, you have, you have the Gospels, you have the Book of Acts, and then you have the writings of Paul, and then you have the other writings, and then Revelation. Genesis is, is, is proper because it talks about the beginning. Revelation is proper because it talks about the end and the new beginning. Other than that, you're not looking at books written in chronological order. You're, you're written, you're looking at books written in historical, for historical reverence. Now, the first five books of the Bible, which are, which are Genesis, Exodus, Leviticus, Deuteronomy, Leviticus Numbers and Deuteronomy, which is called the Pentateuch. I mean, that word just should have rolled off my tongue. So, I'm sorry about that. The first five books of the Bible, I mean, they are in, in historical order and then you start to get into the history books. And they are, for the most part, in a general historical order. But, but historical order wasn't necessarily as important, you know, time-wise. But, but you have your history and then you get into the New Testament and you get into how it's written out. So, for the New Testament, that's really where I want to go. I'm, I'm not going to spend as much time in the Old Testament canon. I want to spend more time in the New Testament canon and how that works out. So, because we're studying the Gospel of Mark. Now, it was believed that the, the first four books of the Bible, Matthew, Mark, Luke and John, they were put in this order by Augustine, St. Augustine, because it was believed that that was the order of writing. Matthew, Mark, Luke, and then John. But in actuality, Mark is dated earlier than Luke or than Matthew. So, it should actually be Mark, Matthew, Luke and John. Mark is dated 55 to 60. Matthew's dated 60 to 65. Luke is dated 60 and then John is dated 85 to 100, depending on who you're talking to. But St. Augustine put the order together for Matthew, Mark, Luke and John based on what he thought to be the chronological order of the books. He was not correct in that. But, but, but he didn't have that information at the time. You learn that later. And also, from a, from a learning perspective, what we know about Jesus, we know the most about Jesus from Matthew and John. But I've said this before, you know, Mark and Luke, they kind of, they add and they, they plug in stories, but Matthew and John are really the two primary books that we learn about the, about Jesus. The Book of Acts, which is number five in the New Testament or number 44 in the total canon, that is the historical narrative of the early church and actually is an extenuation. It is an extension. that is the historical narrative of the early church and actually is an extenuation, it's an extension of the Gospel of Luke. It is believed that the writer of Luke wrote the Gospel and then also wrote the Book of Acts. But it's not, so you would think from a chronology standpoint, you would want Luke, Acts and then John. But Augustine didn't want to break up the four stories of Jesus. And that's all he had, you know, the four stories of Jesus. So that's why the Book of Acts is number five. And then the writings of Paul are not in chronological order from when he wrote them. First book of Paul, actually, the Book of Romans, is the oldest one. It's the one that he wrote last. It is believed that, you know, that's where Paul planned to visit. And he ultimately lost his head in Rome. So it is the, it is the last book he wrote, but it's the longest. So the letters of Paul are laid out in the canon based on their length. Paul wrote the most in the letter in the Book of Romans. And then it's about number, it's about number of words, basically. You know, the Corinthians, 1 Corinthians, 2 Corinthians, Galatians, Ephesians, Philippians, Colossians, 1st and 2nd Thessalonians, 1st, 2nd Timothy, Titus, Philemon, which is a really small book. And then Hebrews. Now, Hebrews is a long book, but there's some question about the authorship of Hebrews, whether Paul actually wrote it or not. So that's why even though it probably from lengthwise should be right after 2 Corinthians, but there's a question about whether Paul wrote the book. And I think that question goes all the way back to when the canon was formed. So that's why Hebrew shows up where it is. And then you have, and then, and again, the last ones, James, 1st, 2nd Peter, 1st, 2nd 3rd John, Jude. It's all about length. It's about which is the longest, which has the most words. So as the book continues on, as the Bible continues on, the letters get shorter and shorter and shorter. So that's how the canon was decided. You know, and it makes sense. It's not how we would do it. We would definitely go more towards dating, you know, when the letter, when the letters were written. But we know far more about these things than the canon fathers did when they decided the canon to begin with. So when we look at the canon, we have to look at the canon through the mind of those who brought the canon forward. We have to look at the canon through the mind of those who were using what information they had, when they had it for what they were doing. And that's what it is. It's not, you know, it's something that we historically continue to unfold. But that's how the canon was formed. All right? So that's what we have when we look at the Bible. And there's so much more to it. Of course, there's so many more layers and pieces I could go into that I didn't go into. Because it would be, I mean, if you're really, really, you know, if you really, really want to be cool about it, you can go into it. But for the most part, this gives you a pretty good idea of the book that we're working with and the scriptures that were, and the scriptures we have in our hand. So there you have it. Translation and paraphrase and the canon, why we have it and how it was formed. I hope this is helpful. I hope this is a good little kind of side session for you to dwell into today. Next week, we will be back with the actual Gospel of Mark. We will continue on with the text itself, but I wanted to share this stuff with you today so you had a basis. And I probably should have done this before, but here it is. You got it now. So be well. Thanks for listening. Share us out there. If you have any comments or questions, then you can get ahold of me. My contact information will come up after this session. As always, blessings to you. I'll talk to you next week.